Heather, she's not gonna be with us?
I thought she had several things going on. And in order for her to make it back by three this afternoon, I've needed to...
Go ahead and call a work session, August 16th, to order. General bids today is telephone, internet, RFP review. Handle that. I'll turn it up.
As the Board recalls, this is our second attempt of having this phone/internet RFP up for discussion. And as a result of the previous attempt, Board authorized us to bring on a consultant. And I don't know how many of you have met him, but Danny Vaughn here on your right has been our consultant on this project. And he participated in putting together the RFP, assessing the buildings, the needs, et cetera, that go along with that. We have received those proposals back in. You all need me to put it up? So we have that process, and we're here today to talk about them. Now, I'm sure that you all, after reviewing what was in your pile, I believe that was in a separate email, if I remember correctly, that you received all three of the proposals. And I know that there are probably some questions that have resulted from your review. I think, and I don't want to speak for him, Danny, but it may be best if you come on up, maybe. Or what if he just sits here because...
The problem with that is there's no microphone that will pick up his voice.
I'm talking about the attorney's...
That'd be fine. But you were putting him at the podium.
He can sit down.
I don't get to be somebody else today, huh?
So, any questions? You know, I don't know if you want to... I mean, my idea would be just to allow Danny to do a quick overview of the RFP, what he saw, what he thought about the project itself. And then I guess we could just open it up for questions about some of what the proposals included. I know that I've tried to run a few just basic numbers. As I said before, I don't claim to have the understanding of all the ins and outs of the systems. I can figure numbers, but if that's okay with the Board, I think. And is that okay with you?
Sure, yeah. Well, good afternoon. I've gone through these proposals, and I'll say that you have at least two bids here that I think probably more accurately reflect what I think that we wanted versus what you had the first go-around. You had two bids that were night and day different. You have at least two bids here that are very close as far as what's being proposed, as best as I can tell. Just to kind of run down the three, there was one bid from a company called Digital Production Hub, I believe is the name, yeah, Digital Production Hub. They kind of took a little bit of a different approach. They've quoted some additional things that was not in the RFP. They've quoted Microsoft licensing for software. And there's even, I believe, if I remember right, like 20 new computers per year in that quote. None of that is anything that you asked for. I'm not saying it's necessarily a bad thing that you may or may not want to take a look at, but it's certainly not what was asked for in the RFP. So therefore, just really no way to compare that quote to the other two. So that's really about all I can say about that particular quote. The other two from IdeaCom and from Skyline Telephone, those two quotes, I think they did a very good job of quoting what was asked for in the RFP. There are a few things that, as I went through, that I wasn't real sure that they addressed, but they're, I think, in the scope of things, they're minor things that we might want to talk about and look at. There is one difference in the quote that I saw, and that's on the broadband/internet side. The quote had requested, in most locations, there was a couple of exceptions, that the vendor provide a 50-megabit symmetrical internet connection. That's what IdeaCom had quoted. Skyline, if I understand their quote correctly, they don't offer a 50-meg service. So they quoted a higher speed. They actually quoted 100 meg. And so therefore, the numbers are kind of skewed there just a little bit because what they quoted is more bandwidth than the RFP actually requested. As far as numbers for the cost, the monthly recurring cost between Skyline and IdeaCom, they're very close. The one exception, and we would need to get clarification on this, is that there's, I think it was about 14 fax lines that were requested in the quote. And Skyline quoted those separately. In the IdeaCom quote, I saw equipment quoted for the fax lines, but I did not see anything specific in there as far as the monthly recurring cost for the fax lines. Maybe there is none, I'm not sure. But that one thing was enough to throw it out of balance just a little bit. Even with that, it's still close as far as the monthly recurring fees between the two. The non-recurring fees for your equipment and for your installation, there's some fairly significant differences there in numbers. Now, again, just looking at the quote, I can't tell exactly what they're quoting as far as the amount of work that they're going to do as far as revamping the networks in all the buildings. So one may be doing more than the other, I'm not sure. Without actually talking to them, it's hard to say. But there is definitely some differences there in the equipment and installation prices between the two. But all in all, I thought both vendors did a good job of quoting what was asked for in the RFP. I'd answer any questions that you might have.
First off, one. What I didn't understand was the exact cost of Skyline's quote and Idea's quote. One of them had added, you know, they had four or five different categories. I think, I think Skyline just had one price.
I've got these numbers here in front of me, and I can read those out if that's appropriate with a vendor in the room. Is that okay, Michael?
They're all public knowledge.
Okay, alright, okay. Alright, so let's look at the phone cost first. Skyline's quote for phone service, just the 111 phones that was in the quote, was $2,066.47. Then there was also an additional $294 for fax lines, which gave a grand total for Skyline for just the phones and the fax lines. That would be $2,360.47 per month.
Per month?
Per month. That was for just the phone. We're not talking about internet or broadband, just the phone service. IdeaCom was $1,158.98 for the phone service. Again, as I said a while ago, I did not see anything in there specifically giving pricing for fax lines. That may or may not be included in the number I just gave you, but there's nothing in there that I can see. So the total for IdeaCom was $2,158.98 for phone only. That's your monthly recurring fees that I just gave you for the phone service only.
That's a reoccurring fee.
That's a recurring fee, yes. That would be what you would be billed per month.
It was with fax line or no fax line? I didn't catch it.
The Skyline numbers that I gave you are phone service and fax lines. And was it appropriate to ask?
Here's my thinking, and you all can change it. Today, I think, is an opportunity to talk about what the proposals included, to identify some of these findings, to answer questions, to take notes of these questions. And I would like to allow Danny the opportunity individually because we don't have representation from any groups, every group, is to conduct those independent questions, ask those questions, and then have a report back. I'd seen this the last time. I'd like to minimize that if we could. Certainly questions from the Board, certainly. And I'm not trying to slight anyone in the room. I just, if there are questions specifically about each proposal, I think we allow that conversation to occur so that we can...
Chairman, my questions are specifically about the RFP in itself.
Right ahead.
Okay, I'm looking at your email of February 9th, 2021. Assist in creating an RFP to be completed by April 30th of 2021. Determine current and future telecommunications needs and develop the specifications for a phone system that best meets these requirements. Now, whenever I look at the RFP that was submitted for the bid, I see very little difference between the first RFP prior to us engaging your services and the RFP that went out for bid. And let me give you where I'm coming from so that you know who this crazy person is. I spent 21 years and seven months in the United States Marine Corps as a communicator. I was a frequency manager, communications chief, where I did the planning, installation, and operation of radio, wire, and the various things that were required for communications in a combat area. My last five years were as the communications chief for Cherry Point, North Carolina. After that, after retirement, I was a Motorola radio salesman, primarily dealing with two-way radio, but specifically with 800-megahertz trunking systems, which I sold for a number of years. Now, whenever I look at an RFP, and I've looked at some and I've bid them, whenever you come up and you start specifying areas like the county administration building, I have 11 offices in this building. You are saying that you want 50 megabit in here. Is this what you would have recommended if you were planning the system and doing an RFP?
Well, I was, what I was recommending was that each office have access to at least 50 megabit of bandwidth, yes. And again, my understanding of my primary purpose here was to come in and to assess the telecommunications needs. The first RFP went out without an actual quantity of phones even that was being requested. And so that was the primary thing that I did was to go through. I went to each office, tried to get an accurate count of the number of telephones that each office had, to try to understand any future needs that they thought they might have, any features that they needed that they did not have today. And those are the things that I put into the quote, or, excuse me, to the RFP.
Let me explain myself a little bit better then. If you tell me that you want, if you came to me and you needed a radio system, I would start looking at a number of things. And this is the way that I look at it right here. The way that you have this and the way it is subsequently bid, these are individual lines.
Are we talking about phone lines or we talking about internet?
Well, I am talking about county broadband internet. It's the title that's there. And you go county administration building, manager's office, 50-megabit, register of deeds, 50-megabit. Now, the way this is, if I was bidding this, you're tying my hands. If I was coming in and I would say, okay, I have had these needs, right now, there's only 50-megabit coming into this building, correct? I looked over the billing, the bills.
And I have too. I'd have to go back and look and see what was...
Whenever I look at the bills, I see one line coming into the VSO for 50-megabits. See another office with 50-megabits. Somebody's complaining about slow internet service in this building right now that I am aware of. But I do agree that in the future, we will need internet access in each one of these offices because of the Zoom that we have suddenly found in COVID. And this is where I'm looking at the future for the county. Way this is written, if you are using individual circuits, what I call circuits, what you will call lines, whatever, we're looking at bringing in 550-megabits of data into the building. But, and I'll be honest with you, I researched and educated myself, since I'm a copper guy. I went in and I've got my reference material that I'm looking at. And what I'm looking in my mind is, if I bring 200-megabits of data into this building, put a PoE switch with 10 lines at the second floor, and the same on the first floor, I have all the doggone bandwidth that I need to meet now, present, and future requirements for the county. Now, the next thing that I look at, because whenever I started looking at line losses, what I'm used to in the radio industry, I know that you have line losses. And according to information that I have, two different sources, it would have a requirement of 5B or 5A, cat 5A, or cat 6. I do not know if this building is wired for this. Is there a requirement for this? Am I off in saying bring 200-megabits and paying for 200-megabits of data to the building and then dividing it up? Am I wrong in my assumptions?
I don't think you're wrong in your assumption at all. That would be one way to do it, absolutely. And the thing that I think you would have to be careful about is how segmented do the networks need to be? Do they need, in other words, from one office to the other? Do they need to be totally separate networks, not sharing internet? Is there any privacy issues there?
Glad you brought up privacy issues. Why didn't the RFP address firewalls?
Again, my understanding of what I was supposed to be looking at was primarily on the phone side, not the network side. That's why I did put in there a comment that the vendor should evaluate the network and make sure that if the network was not sufficient to add a voice-over-IP phone system to the network, then they needed to make the recommendations.
Since you looked at our system here, how much Wi-Fi have we got going on this building?
Well, there's several Wi-Fi units. And I mean, you can see that based on the phone bill. And then several of the offices told me that they had their own Wi-Fi that they were providing, that Skyline was not currently providing.
They open or close, do we know?
Closed, as far as I know. And that's not something I investigated.
This is an area where we've got to look at in the future, especially since we had a pipeline that was shut down. Firewall, that is the purpose of the firewall in my mind. Now, it can be software, it can be hardware. Hopefully, it would be hardware because we don't have an IT person. Nobody's going to keep up with the software right now. This is where I feel that this RFP, to be quite frank, my fellow commissioners, did not meet our future requirements. Because we just had a county that was hit with ransomware. This county cannot afford a million dollars to get our data back. This is where I hoped that we would look at security with the firewall. Now, I'm going to tell you right now. I did not look over the RFP before I voted to it because I have had some health problems. I had a stroke Saturday. I had a minor stroke Saturday, and I am doing the best I can right now. But this is my concern. We are wide open. Now, I have had people tell me, and I have checked with my phone about the Wi-Fi in this building. And I believe I have found that there are some open architecture here, which means that we can be accessed and hacked. The problem that I've got is that we also have Wi-Fi for the town around here, and it's hard to pick out who's who because it doesn't identify. Whenever you go to your phone and you look at Wi-Fi systems that are available through your phone, there's quite a few that are going to pop up here. This is my concern. If we are going to spend the money now and we are going to put in cat 5 or cat 6 cabling to run, let's do it properly, get our firewalls in here at the same time. Because later on, is our wiring cat 5? I guess that should be a question. And the reason, I'm going to give you the reason why I'm asking that. Why do you put in Wi-Fi all over a building for computers that are inside that building to go over Wi-Fi? They should be hardwired. We set up, can we expand in the future?
Those are all valid points. And let me just back up and say that I am not a consultant. I don't, I'm not in that business. I was in Florida, minding my own business, and I got a call saying, would you be willing to help? And I said, well, yes, sure. And, you know, I told Michael and Drew, you know, upfront that I was not a licensed consultant.
Apologies for putting you on the spot.
No, no, that's fine. And you've raised some valid points on the network side. And, you know, I think if you're wanting that level of scrutiny on the network side, then you probably need to look at a professional consultant, someone who does that for a living.
You were highly recommended. I looked at your bona fides, and you are well-qualified, sir. But as you said, in your area of expertise, and I hope you don't think that I'm trying to beat up on you.
I do not, sir.
But at the same time, I'm looking at, we have no video cameras in here. We've got video cameras. We aren't going to put them into the system? Now, the video from Veterans Park's coming over the internet, is it not? Anybody advise you that we had video systems? We've got cameras all over the place, but nobody looks at the feed.
I was aware that there were some video systems being provided by Skyline, based on what I saw on the billing in Skyline.
Okay. Well, and at that, we recently upgraded Department of Social Services. As I look at these feeds, and believe me, I could be wrong. As I look at speeds of 50-megabit, I relate to a household with four computers, two of which were children that are going to be on playing games, and the parents watching a movie. 24-megabits will handle that. Whenever I look at the transfer station for 50-megabits, to me, that's a lot of data coming in to an area where they may not need that. And for my fellow commissioners, whenever you started going with individual lines, that's individual pricing. If you bundle it and then break it out with a PoE switch, it's power over ethernet, then you would probably, if, I believe, I'm not going, I'm going to give you a guess, but if I said that I'm going to charge you $15 for 50-megabit line, and I've got 11 of them, that's $165 a month. But I might be able to bring in 200-megabits or a 100-megabit line for 125, saving a little money right there. And I can break it out and have room for expansion. And then it would be very quick to upgrade if we, in the future, we need 500-megabits. These are my concerns. And the other concern that I have is that in the RFP, in every quote that I ever did or every RFP that I ever worked, I was always looking at something that installation would be in accordance with industry standards. That was missing. And I, you know, if you don't put that in, any jackleg can come in and put in anything, not tag it, do anything like that. How do I quote, if I'm putting, if I'm sitting in a bidder's box, how do I quote an approximately 111 phones? Does anybody, can I give you a quote for approximately? But that is the language that we have in here. That may have been an oversight.
I know in the original... Right, it does say approximate, and, and that's, I'll, I'll take ownership of...
That's administrative oversight, I take it.
It was, it was, approximate was held, I mean, was in the original RFP, I believe, and I failed to get that word striked out.
The other thing that I was surprised to find in there, that one of the requirements is that we have billing on long distance. Voice over IP, there is no long-distance charges, so why do we want to break it out?
My thinking there was that in case a particular office needed to, to find out who's making particular calls, then they would have that billing detail if they wanted it and needed it.
That is a valid point that I didn't remember, particularly with Sheriff's Department. Yep. That is, I'm sorry, sir, I never thought of it. It was my ignorance, so bear with me.
That's, that's fine, man.
Traditional fax lines. Why in the world are we telling you that we need traditional fax lines? Everything's over the computer now. Now, it's, it's just a question for my own edification.
Well, and, and as I went through and did, did the site surveys, everyone told me that they could not get rid of their existing analog fax machines, or was not willing to. So, I, I agree with you. But, but I'm just telling you, that's what I was told, that we've got to have these analog...
I feel sorry for you, because you've had to deal with some people that don't, don't want to come in the 21st century.
You don't need to feel sorry for me at all, look.
Well, these are the questions that I have, and, and Mr. Chairman, these are my concerns, primarily security. We have no firewalls. We are wide open. Now, we are subject to be hit with ransomware, and if we do get hit tomorrow night because this is being broadcast and somebody falls into it, I'm sorry. We have failed to keep up with the technology. We have got to come into the future. Now, the bids, I have no concerns on. It is what we did not address that concerns me. Now, I am sure that any of these bidders, if they come in here, now, they may be bidding 15, 11 individual lines, but they aren't going to put it in that way. They'd be fools if they did. They can bring in 100 meg or 200 meg to this building, put in P, a 20-line PoE switch, and start it going throughout the building. But our vulnerabilities are the Wi-fis that we have in this building, and please correct me if I'm wrong. Our lack of firewalls, and our lack of a IT person to make sure that the software and malware is being kept up to date. Whenever you went to the, whenever you went to 911, this brings up another question. In the original quote, the first quote that we decided not to take, Skyline did not bid on the E-Metro lines. Did you check them to see if they were active?
I, no, no, I did not.
Ever you went to the 911 center, did you check their security there by chance, or did, as you looked at it, did you notice anything?
To be honest, I did not do anything with the 911 center, because it was my understanding that that was not part of this.
Okay. Sorry. And you're right. Other than we've got to provide some telephones in there under this RFP, which we do. Mr. Chairman, these are my concerns. The bids I have looked at, not concerned with them. I do, there's one, there's one area, and let's put ugly on the table right now. As I said, I had a TIA Saturday, so a little bit of what I have read and I have studied prior to now is a little bit fuzzy. Is there anywhere in the RFP that states that the bids are contingent on the porting of the phone numbers that exist in the county offices?
It is not.
So, there's no requirement that those numbers are ported. It's not in the RFP. It's not a requirement of the RFP, is it not?
It's not, no.
So, we could end up with entirely new phone numbers within the county. Cabling in the, in the building, sir, do you think that it could handle future expansion to, let's say, 100 megabits per office?
Yes, I believe so.
That is one concern, but the other, the other concern that I have is with the number of Wi-fis. They have substituted a Wi-Fi instead of running hardline, in my opinion. Would I be correct in my opinion, sir?
In which location?
All of them.
I, that's not my understanding.
Okay. No, we've got a Wi-Fi right back here.
It was my understanding from the bid that, that these are hardwired connections.
Right. To me, I hate Wi-Fi, because it's a point of access for anyone that wants to get into the system and disrupt the system. Hardwire is what I like to deal with, in my experience, but my experience is vastly different from yours, sir.
Well, and again, I, if that's a concern, and I believe that's a valid concern, that's probably something that you should look at a professional consultant, a security consultant, to come in and evaluate your network, and...
Thank you. I, I agree with that. Now, just because I brought it up doesn't mean that it should, we can add this on, but it's going to be additional cost, will it not?
I'm sure it would be, yeah.
I apologize, because whenever we started this discussion, there's a few things that we should have thought about, and I should have brought it up, and it's failure on my part. With my experience, my background and my training, I should have been pressing for the, for the, for the firewalls. I should have been pointing out the need for hardware. Won't make excuses. Should have given you better guidance, sir. I apologize. And that rests at my table, not yours. Mr. Chairman, that's all the questions that I have. I have reviewed the bids, and I am prepared to make, to vote for the awarding of the contract when you so desire, sir.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other questions?
I would be, Tom was talking about switching these PoE switches. I mean, see that, those items on both, and I mean, I would assume that's, that's what they're, is they're going to apply it or...
Yes, they're, it would appear to me they're using PoE switches, and, and I would imagine the phones are being powered from the PoE switches.
Power over the Internet, Ethernet. Chairman, I have, I have one additional question, if I may.
If, I mean, if the, pretty is a question.
Intent was to utilize our IT position. That was the whole intent behind the firewall thing. You know, I, everybody takes their part. I'll take mine. But he began this process. Received, now, he talked about being in Florida minding his own business. You know, I called him, because I got the name to give him a call. And I distinctly, I pulled up on my phone, there was a request to see his resume. I sent it to everybody that had it. When I had at least three meetings, I believe, that Danny was, was a part of. These things tie together, in my mind, and I come from, your firewalls and your protection is a component of an IT, because that's what they're tasked with. And that was, you know, did I communicate that with Danny? No, I didn't. Because in my mind, that was what the IT position would be involved in doing. That's what I'm accustomed to. I couldn't tell you one acronym from the other, when it comes to these switches and all that. I make no bones about that, but I too want us to plan for the future. I don't want to live, how many times do I say we don't need to live yesterday, we need to live tomorrow? But before we get to the point about voting, I would again ask that some of these clarifications be allowed to be translated and communicated with the providers of the proposals, so that we have a clear understanding. And I'll tell you straight up, at the end of the day, if we're not getting what we think we need with, with Danny's, you know, follow-up, I'd say we don't award anything, and we just stay where we're at. It still rings, unfortunately, it rings more than out to a lot of times, but it still rings, we still answer it, we still have Internet. So, if, if this goes beyond that scope, take another chart, but I'm, I'm just asking that we allow that follow-up to occur before we render a decision.
Right, Mr. Chairman, it would have been better to have an IT guy to advise us on this, but we don't know when we'll find an IT guy.
We know is the advertisement is out.
And our primary, we... I got tunnel vision looking at savings. I believe that I wasn't the only one that started looking at the savings for this. But the more I started thinking about it, the more I suddenly realized that we've also got the security aspect, and that struck me right between the eyes in April, whenever the pipeline was shut down. And it got me thinking on this. And it, it is not your, it is not on your table. You didn't, you don't have 20 years of military experience in communications. I did. I should have brought this up. I should have been more concerned about it. I should have voiced my opinion on it more. So, I put it on my table, not yours, because I'm the one, no other commissioner has got the background that I have. And Lord knows, I like to rub my mouth. So, it's on my, it's on my watch. But it's things that I, we, can, can we replace this system? Can we expand it in the future? Yes. Both bids will do this. What I'm saying is, we now have got to take into consideration the security aspects of it. We've got to look at it, it's a hodgepodge right now, put together. We can't do that in the future. In the future, we will be doing more Zoom. I anticipate more data, because we aren't going to travel in the future. Lord knows what's going to be going on. If, I, I am of the opinion that whenever you do an RFP, you leave it open-ended. I would say, provide 200 capability, provide 200 megabits of data to administrative building, which is able to provide voice over IP, Zoom, everything, and let them work it up the way that they would do it. Whenever I say I want 50 here, 50 here, 50 here, 50 here, 50 here, then I am dictated to them how they are going to do their bid, and it may not be the most efficient way of providing communications. My radio background was VHF, HF, UHF, and then all of a sudden, 800 MHz came in. That is the most efficient ways of communicating it that we have in daggone wireless technology right now. If you don't believe it, it's cell phone that all of us have, it's based on it. If I wire myself in, I hardwire this county in to where it will cost us more money to do it in the future, where we may end up having to rip out what we've just replaced and do it again, because additional technology has come on board in the future, I'm sorry, I cannot, I cannot, I've got to bring it up, and we, we may accept these bids, selling good. But it's on me, it's not on you. It's on me. I had the experience. I had the training, I had the knowledge. I should, I, I won't make excuses, but I failed in that regard. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else, Mr. Bobby?
Are we presented with a timeline that we have to do something in X number of weeks or months? And how long are these quotes good for? Once we get an IT person...
I would say in the next 30 days, you need to do something with the...
Next 30 days. I would, Mr. Chairman, I would remind the board that at least one of the bids stated that the discount on the phones was for a limited amount of time. If we go past that time, then they'd lose the discount.
Is that, is that the end of the year?
It is the end of the year.
So, there is that window of opportunity for that. Again, I would just, I think there's some follow-up. I think that, what I'm hearing Danny to say is that respectfully of the three proposals received, that two of them, I guess I would use the word qualify. So, I would ask that you, as a board, would consider to, if you do any action, is to qualify those two bids, and to allow Danny the opportunity to follow up with both of those proposals, and, and address some of these concerns that have came before you today.
I suit the board.
I, I would, I would agree with that. The idea common, the Skyline bids are the ones that we, you're discussing, correct.
Is that agreeable to you? I think that's, it's good questions that's come up here, about the firewall and the Wi-Fi. That's, that's consensus of the boards, is let them go ahead and do that, Danny.
That's fine, as long as we're not talking about trying to address any of the, the security issues and those type things, because that's not part of this, for sure.
That is correct. Should have been in the original RFP.
But, but the simple comment to that could be simply, does any component within your, the proposal of those two qualified proposals, address any type of security component? And if so, there's your answer, and if not, there's the answer.
Buzzing green. Go on, Nick, press session.
One thing in specific that I would like to ask is, are we doing the wiring? Whenever we take this out and we move the Wi-fis, does it look like, I, I see a... Whenever we take this out and we move the Wi-fis, does it look like, I see a lot of Cat 5, Cat 6 cable coming in? If they're doing that, then that tells me they're taking out these Wi-fis. I'd like to make sure on that. If you would look at the bids and specifically in that regard.
Anything else, anybody? Did you everything?
Want us to get to a place, places forward or falling back, we've got to get there.
Question I would have on the two that I can add. They, for example, Skybest, are they providing all of the equipment and all of the services, all the labor? Are they doing it in-house? And is that?
Are they using their own in-house labor? Is that what you're saying?
Right, are they?
Or is it?
They're using a contractor.
They're not contracting any of that.
Right, okay. And then, of course, who would be handling the, would then, follow-up service repair? And I believe I saw in there, there are hours of responsiveness, trickle needs.
Those two providers actually have maintenance agreements.
That was one thing that I failed to mention earlier, but there are maintenance, monthly maintenance agreements for both Skyline and Ideacom. Skyline is on a 60-month term and Ideacom is on a one-month term. So that I assume like Skyline's prices would be locked in for five years if you went with.
Again, is that in-house or contracted out?
I could ask this as a follow-up to help Danny with some of these questions. If there are any additional questions that come to mind, maybe just email those to Drew and I and then we can provide those on to Danny. And that way, he has a full circle of what maybe the communications needs to be.
Be good. Way to go.
I think you brought up the question of whether Ideacom included the fact, had a line for facts, but.
There is equipment, looks like, that has been quoted for facts, but I don't see any monthly, right.
How long will you need to research that and come up with it?
Don't, whether I, how long, or whether I can get in touch with the right people, but I would think a week would be sufficient. That's acceptable.
I was thinking your next day meeting.
Okay, okay, all right. That would be fine. That would be better. I didn't know how quick you wanted it, but.
Anything else, anybody? Try to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I moved.
Motion in second, all in favor? Five oh, thank you. Thank you, folks.